All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Brandywine School District Board of Education Regular Meeting. Tonight is Monday, December 12th. We are live in the Brandywine High School Auditorium, also broadcasting via Zoom. Ms. Harris, may I have a roll call, please? Here.
Here.
Present.
Here.
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 Thank you, Ms. Harris. At this time, I would like to ask Reverend Perry to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's start off the night with our high school reporters, Brandywine High School. Evan Gant or his representative. If you come to the stage podium, please.
Hello. Good evening, board members. My name is Evan Gant, and I am Brandywine High School Student Council President, and I'm here to provide you the school's report for December. Our winter sports season has kicked into gear. Our boys' basketball team is currently 0-3 with a match against Mount Pleasant on the 15th. Girls' basketball is currently 0-3 with a match against Newark Charter School on the 13th. Our swim team is currently 2-1 with a meet against Caravelle Academy on the 16th. Currently, there are no updates regarding indoor track for the season yet. And our wrestling team's season is starting soon with their first match against Odessa on the 21st. With all that, we wish our teams the bestest luck for the rest of the season. Brandywine's clubs and organizations have been adjusting and getting ready for the winter season. Myself and other students are working with Ms. Holman, Brandywine's college and career advisor, to partner with C Teen Delaware in organizing and preparing a Hanukkah celebration within the school this following Monday, the 19th. Brandywine is continuing to encourage students to become a part of the Student Voice Advisory, a group available for students to engage in discussion and provide input surrounding the ever-changing landscape that is Brandywine High School. Brandywine's Culinary and Hospitality Club has been working on their holiday cookie fundraiser perfectly in time for the winter season. Brandywine Student Government and its class offices are beginning to work with MTSS to organize large student award breakfasts. These award ceremonies will be meant for all four grades and to honor students of various strengths, sports, academics, and leadership within the school. We're beginning to work with the administration that conducted the freshman honor roll breakfast this year to turn this plan into action. A lot of details regarding the costs and frequency of the awards are still being decided, but we hope to have those soon. MTSS also plans on working on their own student incentives separate from student council, such as a student versus teacher basketball match and the talent show throughout the year. Brandywine's individual class offices are all doing great, working on doing fundraisers to provide for their individual prom costs. Specifically, the class of 2025 is currently releasing pre-sales for their winter hot chocolate bombs and other winter treats, delivering them on the 19th and 20th. That's all I have for you, Brandywine High School's report for December, and thank you, board members. Have a great night.
Any questions from Evan? No, sounds like there's a lot of good student sports and club and activity engagement, so thank you very much for your report.
Of course. Have a good night.
Next up, we have Concord High School, Mohammed Uden and Tassin Akhan.
All right, good evening, School District Board. My name is Mohammed Adin. I'm the Student Council President of Concord High School. And tonight, I am accompanied by my Vice President, Tassin Akhan. All right, and since the November Board Meeting, Concord has, of course, been very busy. Just recently, our Student Council and our Junior Class Board have been playing our Winter Ball. As a lot of you have known, that our homecoming was very successful, and we project numbers just as high as homecoming for our Winter Ball. But however, there were a couple of problems, you know, it didn't run as smoothly. And because of those problems, we are discussing and we are analyzing what we could have done better and hope to produce a dance that is even better than homecoming. Or yeah, even better than homegoing. All right, so another dance that we're, of course, planning for is the senior prom. Our prom venue has just been booked, and we have booked the waterfall venue and started planning out the events. One of the biggest problems we had as a senior class board is the budget, a very tight budget that was left from the prior senior class board. But due to this adversity, we have, because of our homecoming dance, have increased our budget drastically, and we have, if I do math correctly, it's 20 times now, just due to our homecoming. All right, and one of the biggest things we like to, you know, share with the district about our prom is that we are having a new payment method for our prom. So we know that in these times after COVID and everything, families are not there financially yet. We're still trying to get into back the motion of everything. And because of that, we are starting to have a, we've created a new payment plan for the prom ticket. So this ticket is going to be initially $95, but we have broken up these payments into monthly payments, monthly reoccurring payments. We're going to have a $30, around $25, $30 down payment, and then this January, and then coming February, March, April, leading up, the months leading up to the prom are going to be a reoccurring $15, $20 payment, something like that. We hope that this will create a better, an easier way to implement the prom tickets into family budgets, and we want to make it as inclusive as possible. And that's why we created the recurring payment system. As well as inside of our school community, we have also been very active outside of our community. Just recently, we held, there was a Fall Leadership Conference held at University of Delaware. Two of our clubs from Concord had attended, DECA, as well as Educators Rising. This conference was a day-long event, and it had lots of activities and engaging moments for students all across, for students all across the state of Delaware to engage in, and we learned a lot of leadership skills and activities there. Continuing along with DECA, I'm the DECA President, and recently, we've been preparing for our state competition. It's going to be held at University of Delaware as well this February. As of right now, Concord's DECA chapter is the biggest chapter in the state of Delaware, and we're, and that is something we take pride in. One of the biggest things that's also going to happen at the state competition down in February is that we were having a canned food drive for the entire state of Delaware. I'm a part of the state officer team as well for DECA, and we have been tirelessly, you know, planning this event out and hoping that we can raise as many and collect as many donations for the Newcastle County Hope Center. That's the homeless shelter that we are focusing on up here in Newcastle County. But yeah, we were holding a, and we're, sorry, and we're having a friendly rivalry with AI Dupont High School to see who can, which school can outperform the other in number of donations, so that'll be fun to see. And I'll have my Vice President speak on other things.
Good evening, everybody. I'm the Vice President of Concord High School. So I'll be speaking mainly about the amazing community service projects that we've been working on. I'm also the President of National Honor Society, and me and Mohammed are also events coordinators for Interact Club. So those are like three of the biggest community service clubs in our schools, so we know a lot about it. So, beginning off, our Interact Club has had our Thanksgiving food drive last month in November, where we raised a bunch of canned goods and other stuff like that. And we donated that to the Newcastle Community Center, which Mohammed was also talking about prior. We also plan to do a lot more with the Claymont Community Center. Ms. Davis and Ms. Johnson, we are hosting a coat drive for this winter. We plan on giving all the donations to the Claymont Community Center, as well as coats to the Brandywine School District community and people who are also struggling financially after COVID, obviously. Recently, our stockings for soldiers just ended, which was at the Brandywine Town Center. It was at the Brandywine Town Center, and we stock soldiers and send them off to veterans who are serving for us and helping us. So, Interact Club and National Honor Society partner together in hosting as many hours as we can to help out. So, at that event, we had over 200 combined hours through all of our members, and we raised a bunch, made a bunch of stockings, and helped a lot of people out. Continuing on with National Honor Society, we just recently ended our toy drive, where we raised over 40-plus toys and also $300 to donate to children at AI Dupont Hospital. Continuing on, our Concord football team this Saturday just hosted the football team Breakfast with Santa, as well as the Holiday Vendor Fair, and we had over $1,000 in sales, and that all covered funding for classes 24 and 25 for all the events that they have planned, such as the Winter Ball and their prom that they have next year. Continuing on, our Science National Honor Society also had a Breakfast with Santa event at the Delaware Nature and Science Museum, which we helped serve and prepare breakfast for over 300 guests. And the staff had amazing things to say about everybody, and we've also been invited to the same event next year. Science National, continuing on with Science National Honor Society, we also partnered with the Black Student Union, where we're helping recycle plastics. So, we're currently collecting plastic water bottles filled with like common plastics, like chip bags, candy wrappers, bubble wraps, and recycling them into bricks that will hold the garden up. Lastly, our sports team, I just actually finished my swim meet like two hours ago. But we were 2-4-0 right now. I don't have much to say about the other sports events, because I wasn't planning on speaking about them at the moment, but I just heard Evan talk about it, so I thought we should talk about our amazing swim team. But yeah, as you can see, Concord has been very engaged in their community. One of the biggest things we are trying to strive for this year is a very engaged community. Last year, we kind of lacked that insider school, but of course, with my new Student Council Board members and Student Council in general, we really want to push that community-based aspect in our school. We're seeing making events, doing fundraisers, doing community service projects, just to hope to get that idea of community across. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, actually, I don't know if you can hear me. Would I be able to learn more about your graduated payment plan for prom? I mean, you don't have to, I mean, just whatever, and you can send it to me, but I'm just curious about that. I would love to install that.
Of course.
Thank you so much.
Could you remind me of your name, please?
Kimberly Stock.
S.T.O.C.K. I also had a question about the prom. Are you all taking electronic forms of payment for prom tickets?
I think so. So what we're planning on doing is we're probably going to do an electronic payment method, but we also want to help like sell maybe a wristband or something, kind of like as a memorabilia aspect as well. But I think we do accept all types of payments, so cash, check, card, everything like that.
And can you tell me what the Interact Club stands for and what's the goal or mission for that club?
So, Interact Club is a community service-based club where we participate in like many events, just bettering our community. It's sort of like NHS in a sense. We partner with them a lot, because we do have the same sense of morals and stuff, and like helping the community. Also, continuing on with Interact Club, we're also like a leadership-based club. We have a Rotary Youth Leadership Academy event this President's Day weekend next year. I was blessed enough to be able to attend it last year, and it was an amazing opportunity to help me learn with leadership and events like stuff. It was a lot of community building, team activities and stuff like that. It was a three-day long trip in Ocean City. It was just, Interact Club is basically helping build your skills and leadership and helping your community and helping everybody else.
So is it a part of Rotary?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
And adding on to that, Interact Club, that Riley trip that my fellow officer was talking about, those are for juniors only, and we're, we want to open it up to just juniors, because they're going to be the future of our Interact Club. And as officers, they need these essential skills for leadership and stuff like that. So, since we want to build that legacy and kind of build that foundation for them to hopefully take on the next role.
Thank you.
There was something you said early on that I was really impressed with, your, I think it was homecoming. You say, you know, as a student body, you reflected and wanted to look at, you know, what you could do different in the future. So, I really appreciate that. That's a great thing to do. And certainly, the creativity with the payment options for prom, stretching it out, starting early. And, you know, your message of community is being received loud and clear. You know, you guys are doing some phenomenal things, your groups, you know, dedicated to it, the amount of hours, the food drives, you know, the leadership, you know, everything, you know, really focusing on that community. So, well done.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you for your time.
And last but not least, we got Mount Pleasant High School, Dylan Kim and May Wong.
Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, Mr. Superintendent, members of the Brandywine School District Board, and members of the Brandywine School District community. My name is Dylan Kim. This is May Wong, and we are the Student Council President and Vice President of Mount Pleasant High School. So we recently implemented a feedback forum where students can submit any feedback, ideas, or concerns that they want addressed on a Google form. This allows students to offer ideas they want happening at our school and concerns that they believe should be addressed. This implementation brings us one step closer to being a cohesive community by staying in touch with the student body. We've already had great engagement and look forward to what it can do for us. And at some point, we'd like to have a town hall after school where students can come out and talk about these topics, and they're some of the topics that I reserve at school too. So, I'm really glad that we're having communication within our student body so that we can have a realistic outlook of what we as a student government should do. At the beginning of Thanksgiving break, the JRLTC Robotics Team competed for the first time in the school year as a combined middle school and high school robotics, VRC, at Tally Middle School. They came in first place of the entire tournament with an undefeated match streak. We are proud of the development of our VEX team and look forward to their progress in the future. This is their only second season after being created last year, and I'm really impressed with the progress that they've made. The JRLTC cadets volunteered on Thanksgiving Day at the National Multiscale Rosis Society Thanksgiving 5K/10K Run, handing out water to the runners at the halfway point of the 10K. We appreciate the service to our community, even during the holidays when they're obviously tired from school, but we really want to support the community. The Drama Department completed their production and playing of their fall play, She Killed Monsters, and recently hosted auditions for their one-act festival, a collection of mini productions led by student directors, and played into winter in January. And auditions for the spring production Frozen have begun this week, and in fact, they're going on right now from 6:00 to 9:30. So we really wish those aspiring actors luck, and they also have auditions tomorrow as well. The National Honor Society Food Drive actually wrapped up just today. We figured out, we found out that the senior class won with the most food items donated, and they'll get to vote for the five staff members to get patted in the face at the event. So that'll happen last period tomorrow, and we've heard that a total of 270 food items were donated. So this is a really fun and interactive, and also, most importantly, an effective way to really give back to our community and provide these food drives for the people in our community.
Our marching band wrapped up their 2022 season with a banquet two weeks ago. Although our normal tradition of marching in the Claymont Christmas Parade could not happen due to the weather, the band celebrated a great season and dined together, exchanging gifts and awards to each other for fun. Our music program at Mount Pleasant played their winter concerts last week with holiday-themed songs and musical pieces that ensembles prepared. Unfortunately, Jazz Band was not able to perform, but all of our other ensembles, honors and standard levels, as well as after-school, have gave great performances. Winter sports have recently started. The boys' basketball team won their first home game against Glasgow High School this past Tuesday with a score of 61 to 29. The girls' basketball team unfortunately lost their home game against Ursuline Academy on Thursday with a score of 21 to 78. As always, our Mount Pleasant High School community would like to thank you for their continued efforts to provide a high-quality education for us all. Thank you for your time, and we are open to questions.
What time is last period tomorrow for the pie thing?
Last periods, I believe it's at 1:45 when the clock is down for the event.
Great. No, I really appreciated the, you mentioned the feedback forum from students, you know, engaging with your classmates to, can, you know, get their ideas to contribute to the overall, you know, school experience. And the town hall, I think, sounds like an awesome idea. You know, so good luck with that.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
And as always, our students, we know you guys have other commitments, so if you need to exit, we understand. But I will just say, I know it's easy, at least for me personally, to get caught up in a lot of the chaos that goes into the world and the loud voices on the fringe of the spectrum, but listening to these students tonight and hearing the things that they're doing, I am confident saying I think our future is going to be okay. And that'll lead us into special presentations. We have Equity Initiative update. Dr. Lawson and Ms. Davis.
Good evening. See if I can rearrange this a little bit so I can see. Good evening, President Scrobott, Vice President Heller, Superintendent Holer, and members of the board. I'm Lisa Lawson, your Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Markeia Davis, our Supervisor of Equity and Culture, and we are here to bring you the first of many updates around our equity initiatives going on in the district. So, as usual, we have to make sure that we're aligning our work, our strategic plan for the school district, which we had a workshop to indulge you with. Equity is everywhere across our strategic plan, but most definitely, our focus area one around high-impact instruction in terms of academic equity, are all students getting the same access and opportunity as other students? And then in focus area two, called climate, culture, and community, certainly, we want to look at equity across the board in that focus area. It also touches focus area three and four, but again, we're just getting started in this work. Also wanted to align our DOE initiatives. As you may be aware, Regulation 220, under Title 14, speaks of diversity and making sure that we're embedding equity and diversity across all that we do in the district. And then also, we have the Delaware Strategic Intents, which focus on equitable initiatives. The first that we have been working on, student voice and empowering student voice, as you heard here this evening, Ms. Davis is doing a splendid job with our high schools around that. We continue that work. We would like to let you know about an equity audit that is about to take place in January. We will go over the timeline in just a minute, but in terms of what an equity audit is, it is a baseline assessment. It allows for us to have a starting point and some focal points. As you know, the work that we do is, should be based in data, and this is the kind of data that we would like to collect. So, we intend to go after that data for all of our groups. Go to the next slide. Who, who will be involved in this audit, in this participation around these questions in this survey? It will be all BSD employee groups. So, obviously, our teachers and administrators and folks in our schools, but we also want to ensure equitable practices and equity with our facilities, our maintenance department, our transportation department. So, all of the BSD staff will be participating. To do this work, we have decided to join our, a few of our sister districts have engaged this particular vendor, this particular company, Equity &amp; Beyond. So, Newcastle County Vocational Technical School District, Red Clay, K Penlopin, to name a few. So, we had them come in and do a presentation. I picked out three pieces of their vision, mission, and values that we particularly liked and thought that I would share with you. Dr. Ernest Blackwell and Dr. Robert Simmons led you in our first session, but they will be leading us as well. Their vision includes systems that ensure every individual thrives within their organization. I love that piece. Part of their mission is to collaborate with bold organizations to build a culture of trust, belonging and interdependence through relationship-based strategic planning and implementation. And then one value that stuck out to us was that no problem is unsolvable if we are committed, accountable, and inclusive.
This is very challenging to say. Good evening, everyone. Why are we pursuing the Equity Audit? As we just recently did with our students and engaging them in a panorama survey, it was important for us to hear their voice. It is also important for us to hear the voice of our employees as well in thinking about how we're going to work to incorporate next steps as we move towards equity in our district. We'll be able to do some comparing around student perception and employee perception based on the multiple surveys that we're engaged in as well. This just shares a little bit about our partnership. This past July, we were able to partner with Equity &amp; Beyond with Dr. Blackwell and Dr. Simmons. Again, as Dr. Lawson shared, they have partnered with multiple school districts up and down the state, and we are excited to engage their leadership with supporting the DEI initiatives in the Brandywine School District. There is a focus on anti-racism, inclusion, diversity, and equity. Where school leaders, as well as our Equity Champions and District Office staff, will engage in five sessions with them. And then, I can't see. This January, we will engage in the audit, and then also, we have been engaging the board as well in some of our conversations and just them working to understand their governance and where the role of equity lies in that as well. These are just a few of the survey topics that will be included, along with some sample questions. We are going to focus on the school culture and climate, staff, teach and teacher recruitment, retention, and advancement, diverse, equitable, and inclusive practices and policies, as well as student experience and voice. And if you are at all familiar with the Delaware Strategic Intents, as Dr. Lawson mentioned, they really closely align the strategic, the strategic intents. The first one is around elevating student voice. The second is around diversifying our educated workforce. The third and fourth are around building culturally responsive leadership, as well as culturally responsive teaching. And then, we're also building partnerships within our community as well. And so, as we engage in moving towards those indicators, we will also have some data to support some of the goals and measurable items that we're pursuing as well. And so, coming up very shortly, this is the timeline that we will engage our staff. This month, we will be communicating to all of our staff. Principals will receive an individual link for their school, as well as the District Office and all of our other support departments as well. We have set aside time on December 9th, I believe is one of our professional development days, so that we get the large participation that we need from staff. So time will be provided for them to do that during the school day. And then also, moving forward, the month of January, February, we will be working collaboratively with the, with our partners of Equity &amp; Beyond to disaggregate our data and really dig into our data to plan our next steps. There are any questions for us?
I think so. Thank you very much.
So as the next group comes up, I again would just like to thank Ms. Davis, Dr. Lawson, So as an, as the next group comes up, I again would just like to thank Ms. Davis, Dr. Lawson and the entire leadership team, building principal staff for starting this important work and ensuring that our work is focused on what we outlined in our district's success plan. So thank you.
Great. So next up, we have House Bill 198, update and overview.
Great. Good evening, President Scrobott, Vice President Heller, Superintendent Holer, board members. Last February, Dr. Pruder provided an overview of House Bill 198 and projected plans moving forward. Tonight, we would like to briefly review the bill and share the BSD plan, which is in three parts. Part one is developing or our K-12 instructional framework, which also includes developing students' respect for cultural and racial diversity, enabling students to understand the ramifications of prejudice, racism and stereotyping, and providing opportunities for students to discuss and uplift the black experience. Part two is the actual implementation of the units and the lessons. And then part three is the professional development surrounding that. So and can be found in the most recent board packet. So you have that, you have the House bill language itself, our plan. And then tonight, we're going to give examples in this overview. But first, some introductions. So with us tonight, we have Mrs. Uchache Amadipwe, and she is the teacher of Teacher Academy, teacher at Concord High School, and she's also our BSD Teacher of the Year over here. We also have with us tonight, Mrs. Markeia Davis, our Supervisor of Equity and Culture, who did a wonderful job just presenting. Mrs. Regina Evans, a fourth grade teacher at Harlan Elementary, myself, Michelle Kutch, Director of Curriculum Instruction, Dr. Lisa Pruder, our Social Studies Coordinator, and also Mrs. Adrian Stansbury, our Equity Coordinator. This, the purpose behind the bill is to ensure the study of black history that includes educating students about how black persons were treated, their influences and contributions throughout history. The study of black history is intended to do all of the following. And so as you can see there, examining the ramifications of prejudice, racism and intolerance, preparing students to be responsible citizens to combat racism, inequality and discrimination, and reaffirm the commitment of free peoples to the 13th Amendment of the United States Constitution. Beginning this school year and for subsequent school years, House Bill 198 requires the school district to report each year to the Department of Education how we have implemented a curriculum on black history for students in grades K-12 and the professional development to support this work. And this is reported on November 15th each year. So just want to put this up as a reminder, the report itself is organized into three parts. We're going to present each of those three parts tonight in the form of examples as you have the plan in your board packet.
All right. So this first, these first several slides reflect the work that we've been doing around our student voice. We decided to identify four different experiences. I will be sharing two of them and then Ms. Stansbury will be sharing two as well. So the first image that you see, really the work that we did supports being trauma responsive and helping students to recognize the impact of racial and historical trauma on students. And so I believe it was last year, the Joint Student Council actually came together inviting additional student union groups to participate in their conferences that they held. They held two of them last year, which focused on racial discrimination, trauma, as well as mental health. During these sessions, they had the opportunity to learn from a prestigious guest speaker, Dr. Julius Mullin, who is a well-known psychologist and in the mental health field. And he came and educated our students around those particular areas. They also had an opportunity to engage in restorative practices, a restorative circle. They also had the opportunity to engage and dig into some of our district data as well and then collaborate as school teams to determine some next actionable steps with moving forward to leave with their schools as well as their next up and coming student councils.
The second picture, Up for Learning, provides a foundation for student leaders to utilize strategies, tools and ongoing coaching in schools to ensure that all young people can pursue active roles in their learning, their lives and their community. The third picture, in partnership with United Way of Delaware, Brandywine School District students attended the Black Student Summit in April of 2022, which is by far and for students who want to turn up the volume and activism of black student unions and associations. The summit is meant to prepare, train, refuel and uplift students and the adults that support them. During the summit, students were reminded why it's important to use your voice and how to do it in a way that powers up change for the better where you learn.
And then the last image just reflects the opportunity that we've established for our students to express their voice. In 2021, we were able to engage our students in grades six to 12 and taking the panorama survey. And as well as again, this year, some of the content or topics included emotional regulation, diversity and inclusion, cultural awareness and as well as mental health. This year, we were able to expand the survey to include our fourth and fifth grade students as well. The students were also provided the opportunity to not just give an indicator of multiple choice responses, but they also were able to provide some commentary around and provide some narrative around the choices that they made with their selections in the data. We are excited that we were able to capture very close to about 80% of our student body from fourth to 12th grade, just shy, we did 78%. So we're still working to the next go around to pursue a higher engagement rate. We will, we are in the process of releasing that data gradually with our district administrators, school principals, our champions to and then work to analyze the data and then create some next steps that support our strategic plan as well.
Good evening, everyone. So this K-12 Teacher Academy is a CTE pathway whose standards are based on the Educator's Rising Standards. And the Educator's Rising Standards have cross-cutting themes that hit a lot of the indicators that the bill speaks to, cultural responsiveness and competence, DEI, diversity, equity and inclusion, reflective practice, practice, ethics, social justice, advocacy and self-efficacy. And the social justice course is also, it's, it's, we're using it as a, as a fourth level course for the Teacher Academy pathway, but it is also open to all students in the school. And their standards are based on the social justice standards of learning for social justice. And so by the time students complete both the social justice course and level one to three of the Teacher Academy, they will have the opportunity to do the following. They should have had the opportunity to examine the history of discrimination in the US, understand the ramifications of prejudice, racism and stereotyping, reflect on their responsibility for social action and anti-racist advocacy, plan and execute a social action that empowers and moves humanity forward. If you can go to the next slide. So with the pictures on the left, those are some social justice, students from my social justice class. They're using a Socratic seminar to engage in a courageous conversation around toxic masculinity. And you might say, toxic masculinity, what is that? The students chose that topic after going through a series of a process to decide what they wanted to talk about to engage in courageous conversations. And they chose that because some of the males in the class were feeling pressured by some of society's expectations. And it was an amazing experience. I learned a lot. I didn't know what it was until they brought it up, so it was good. And then on the, on the other side, it's the same students. They're using a concentric circle to discuss erasure and cancel culture relative to American history. And that led into the work that we do in studying the indigenous peoples of this country. Next, next slide. And this slide is Teacher Academy. Teacher Academy students, and they are redesigning the school system after examining their own experiences in school so far and realizing that their experiences haven't really reflected who they are. So they were tasked to redesign the school system and come up with their ideal learning environment. And that's what the picture reflects that they are doing. Thank you.
Hello there. So part two of the HB 198 legislation identifies eight curriculum requirements to be addressed over the course of students K through 12 education. We are identifying and developing instructional materials to fulfill each requirement in elementary, middle and high school. Last spring, we created an elementary black history committee, and that committee is now developing lessons for each grade level. In middle school, social studies teachers are implementing the newly revised model lessons from DOE, which were recently created with HB 198 in mind. Middle school ELA teachers this year are implementing a curriculum and many aspects of that new curriculum address HB 198 as well. At the high school level, social studies teachers have worked together during PD days and PLC time to identify where each requirement should be taught and to share instructional materials. And high school ELA teachers are in the process now of selecting a new curriculum. And they are using a rubric that ensures that we will choose rigorous, diverse and culturally relevant texts. Across all grade levels, visual and performing arts teachers are developing units that highlight the achievement and contributions of black people to the arts. So this is where I get into the nitty gritty of the curriculum. So within each grade cluster, here you see great K to five, we can consider the maturity of our students' existing curriculum and state standards when determining where each requirement of HB 198 should fit into K-5 and then 612. So this spiraling approach gives students the opportunity to revisit these topics with increasing depth from their K to 12 experience. So for example, students first learn about letter A, the history of black people prior to the African diaspora in social studies in grades three and four. Thank you. Then they'll revisit this topic in the context of world regional geography in sixth grade and then in the context of world history in 10th grade. And now Ms. Devens will talk about her students' experience with one of these items.
Good evening. So in the initial stages of the curriculum development, the writing team collaborated on two central themes, one being creating content that students could have an emotional connection with. And secondly, the goal of affirming students' value and their identity through our curriculum content. The third grade curriculum focuses heavily on black people prior to the African diaspora and African, the geography of the continent of Africa. Ms. Pruder came in and piloted the unit that we had completed in my classroom with the most perfect third graders you've ever seen before in your life. And the first picture demonstrates a bonus benefit that the students experienced. Exploring a globe, many of them, for the first time, they physically held one. They began to ask questions about the numbers on a globe. What does it mean? Why is it tilted this way? Why does it move? What is this in the center? It was an explosively amazing discovery period. And Ms. Pruder graciously answered their trillions of questions and we let the moment happen and it continued to get more brilliant with each passing moment. The second demonstration, which is lesson two of this same unit, is a simulation of the students participating in a gold and salt trade. We divided the classroom into each country. They completed their barter and paid taxes to the government and learned all about paying taxes, spending money, saving money and keeping just enough for yourself. And the third slide brings us to the Western kingdoms of Africa that the students learned all about Mansa Musa and the wealth, riches and ingenuity that rests in these kingdoms prior to the African diaspora. Each lesson that we compiled is aligned with our traditional reading structure where there, the lesson begins with a student focus, a heavy focus on vocabulary that we hope transfers into other curriculum content. The students then have opportunities where we check for understanding using many of the platforms and apps that were provided to us during the pandemic. They're still getting much use in our classrooms and giving extra opportunities for student engagement. Our administrators also find it very important to implement, successfully implement HB 198 in our classrooms. They invested not only their manpower, but their time to personally come in and help out Ms. Pruder and myself to teach these geniuses. You'll see our proud, our proud principal, Ms. Tracy Roberts, in the first picture, helping students with the mapping exercise. Our ardent assistant principal, Ms. Devon Johnson, is on the right, helping out a student. And our diligent dean of students, Mr. Douglas Cuffey, also helping provide insight to a student within the lesson. Harlan has been so excited to have the opportunity to pilot this content. We look forward to more opportunities and resources to keep the momentum going. Thank you.
I'm excited about this slide, right? Some of this you heard from the previous presentation, so I won't belabor it. Again, our professional learning that has occurred thus far, we've been able to engage our districts and district school and staff in multiple trainings. The bottom reflects one of our elementary schools engaged in restorative practice training, which we conducted in-house with our restorative practice trained trainers. The picture above the first column is our administrative staff and champions engaged in professional learning with our Equity and Beyond partners as well. The center, again, we've engaged our board in their first workshop as they think about equity and their role in governance in our school district. And then this last part, this family engagement. I was pleasantly surprised to be invited to two spectacular events last week. One of them, which picture is first? So the one up top is of Tally Middle School, which is the ADIT program where Jeff Lawson is the principal, and he has these dynamic ADIT coordinators, Paula Mitchell and Tamika Pinkley. They engage their site team to pack out the cafeteria with their families, their students to engage in a contract signing party as students committed and repeated. as students committed the and repeated the Tally ADDIT oath um and celebrating their commitment to the ADDIT program, which was powerful, gave out T-shirts, snacks. Families also bought socks and donated socks to our homeless uh cause and organization as well. So that was one. Well, then I got another invitation to go over to Concord High School where Mark Mayer is the principal. I was unsure about what this particular um family engagement opportunity was, but when I arrived, there were multiple male mentors that were invited to come to the school, particularly the ninth grade ELA classes were participating. There were about nine or ten plus or minus male mentors that showed up to simply validate and affirm the value of students in the classroom. There was not a dry eye in the room. They bought a gift to so just to support and shared how they were going to support their student. And I'm bringing this up because this helps to disrupt the narrative that we sometimes experience that suggests that our parents and our families are inaccessible or unavailable. But these men showed up. One in particular was a police officer. He came for his niece. He had learned how to scuba dive and swam to the bottom of the ocean, selected these pearls and made a bracelet, especially custom-made bracelet for her. And that was his presentation to her. Papa talked about raising eighteen grandkids, but showing up for this one in the classroom. And I have to go back to the police officer. He was really moved because he said, you know, in his line of work, he does not have the opportunity to see the good side of life. He has to respond to the crisis situations. But in this room, these men showed up to validate our students, to support our students, to encourage our students. And it just shifted the whole dynamic energy in the classroom, in the hallways. It was just a powerful, powerful experience. I encouraged Mr. Mayor to find some opportunity to build on it, um to continue to bring our community into our um classrooms. Just a powerful two-way opportunity for professional learning to occur. We appreciate your time and attention. Have a great evening, unless you have questions for us.
I just, just one question, going back to the panorama survey and the staff survey. Um, how can we get copies of at least a summary of the data that was collected?
So the the data was actually just released to us today. And so we are working to organize it, to uh create some goals around it, but we can um I'll follow the lead of superintendent Holder to see how we can make sure you have access to the data.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Outstanding presentation.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Mr. Kenny Rivera, um mode of instruction for SAT and PSAT.
Thank you. It's a tough presentation to follow, and I see no one wants to stand up here with me when I present going to async. Okay. Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Haller. I'm gonna first start by giving some credit to Hope Moffett, who could not be here tonight for her hard work with this plan, along with input from the three high schools. As a reminder, all juniors and some seniors are required to take the SAT exam as part of the Delaware State Assessment um that they're required to take. The data from this exam is a major part of the school's accountability rating. And it's also used to help teachers um drive their instructions for their students based off of that data. Students' performance on the SAT and PSAT also have major implications for the student submission into college and scholarships as well. This year, the dates for the SAT and PSAT exams are up there. You see Wednesday, March twenty second. All of our eleventh graders and some of our twelfth graders will be taking the exam. And then on April eighteenth, all of our ninth and tenth grade students will be taking the PSATs as well as eleventh and twelfth years who need to do makeups for the SAT on that day. So tonight I am publicly presenting our plan to change the mode of instruction on these two days to asynchronous for high school students who are not testing. Uh, there is more detailed information that and the data that was um available to the board members in the board packet. So this is just a a high-level overview for tonight. Um, the last year, the school district's SAT participation rate was around low less than seventy percent because we did not hit the required ninety-five percent participation rate. A plan is due to the state by December sixteenth this year. And just so you know, just about every school in the state is in the same boat as us there, so we all have plans to do. And I know many of the schools across state are looking at our plan, looking to adopt or mirror aspects of what we've put together. We're only talking about one part of the plan here today. A part of this plan is to change the mode of instruction as part of that comprehensive approach that we have to increase test and participation. I I do want to be clear, and um I want to say this multiple times, we do not prefer or desire to have asynchronous days. Nor do we believe that just changing the days to asynchronous alone will achieve our 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 objective to increase the participation, the fidelity of the test administration. We believe students should be in person, learning from our excellent teachers. You're gonna see a couple of them in a couple of minutes here. But the the importance and the impacts of this exam led us to this plan that we have for you tonight. So we believe change in the mode of instruction will lead to first higher participation rates. We believe this will provide for extra staffing that will be available to follow the recommended protocols and practices the college board asks us to follow um by allowing us to have late arrival testing rooms. So students who do come late, believe it or not, some students do come late to school. Um, they would be able to test instead of not being able to test at all. Allows us to have targeted makeups as well, whilst the school is being able to dedicate resources to running these daily makeup sessions after the first test date. It will allow us to have better operational logistics. DOE goes around to the schools and monitors uh the test insights on uh SAT days. And they gave us feedback last year uh that we did not have sufficient number of testing insurance and hall monitors based on seating arrangements of students. That's their wording. Um, both uh for PSAT nine and ten last spring and this fall, uh testing was sustained through extensive support of district administration who came into the schools and helped administer and and the setting and the scene for that is quite often. As I've been at Mount for the past couple of years, we have eighty to one hundred students in the gyms um being administered by uh district admin. Uh, maybe not the 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 best setting for students taking such an important test. Um, with async, because the other teachers are teaching. And uh with async instruction, that means the other staff who typically will be teaching all the other students would be available to help facilitate testing rooms, monitor the halls and lead to a whole school environment focused on the test. We believe this will also lead to higher test scores and better school ratings in our accountability model. Um, the staff and flexibility will allow for smaller rooms, allow students to test with their own teachers who they know, which is a much more ideal testing environment. And we believe this will lead to better student outcomes on this test that we know impacts their college admissions, school grading, scholarships, and gives us better, more accurate data on how our students are actually doing. Also note that participation under ninety-five percent counts against a school rating. So for every student that we have that falls below that ninety-five participation rate, they count as a zero for the school. So for example, we may have a school um where we have the students who test it all were, you know, sixty, seventy percent proficient, which is very good, very strong. However, if a third of the school doesn't test, it appears to the public that our proficiency rate is in the thirty percent, which is far from the truth. That's where we are. Next, we believe uh this um recommendation is in alignment with the mode of other districts in the state. Um, other states, uh other districts are planning to do this in the state. Um, last year, we saw um most of the Newcastle County schools moving this way. Two of the schools uh districts in the county, I was told, did not plan to, but then the week or week before ended up changing their mood to async, realizing that this was too big of a thing to pull off with um not moving to async. And the last point here is we believe there's no longer term implications from this change because SAT exam will change next year. It'll be a redesigned test. It'll be a shorter test. And the window that we can give the test also changes when it becomes longer, but it also begins, it will be aligned to other state assessments that we give, so we can give multiple tests to the whole building at the same time. It will also mirror or overlap with the PSAT window. I mean, we could actually have almost a whole school building testing at the same time, depending what test the student needs to take, which is gonna be fantastic. So the last part is we need to make sure we clearly and effectively communicate this to our community, so beyond just tonight. Um, we know we have to submit the plan to DOE by the sixteenth. We would want to update the mode of instruction on the school calendar, make sure our families know. Um, we send out the email, the monthly board report to our families. We would love to include that in there. And then schools would be happy to communicate this with their families as well and remind them as the day approaches. Thank you very much for your time, and I'm happy to take whatever questions, comments you may have.
How many days are we talking?
Two, well, two total, but remember for ninth and tenth, there'll be testing one day, and then we're asking for async for them for the other day. And then on the SAT day, that's eleventh grade and some twelfth grade will be in here. And then when the ninth and tenth are tested, they would go to async. So for the vast majority of students, it's one day.
Mr. Rivera, I have one question. Um, what are some of the efforts that are being done? Because I know ninety-five percent is very difficult to get as someone who does access testing for hundreds of students, I know. Um, what are some of the efforts that are being done previous to the test to communicate to families about the testing, about what needs to happen? They need to come with a Chromebook, blah, 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 blah.
Right. So each of those schools is, they're working with Hope right now to come up with that comprehensive plan. They're finalizing that right now, going over all of the efforts they're going to take, which includes the communication, the schools trying to communicate the importance of it. And then once they know what staffing is available, they're gonna figure out the the plan in terms of how they're gonna man and create makeup sessions as well. The other key piece, which I didn't get into this presentation, is how we're gonna attack the testing differently this year. So there's a a one-week window, then there's the makeup. You saw the makeup on the PSAT exam. And we usually, as as a district, and we will pick a day in that first week where you can pick a day for your to administer SAT. We're gonna uh attack this a little differently. We're going, on the very first day of the window, we're gonna give the SAT. And then we're gonna treat the next four days as makeups, even though they're not technically makeups, but that's how we're gonna treat them to um get very much like we do in elementary and middle schools with, there is like a window and we test them as soon as we can, and then we do makeup. We're gonna change from how the state does it and look at them as makeup days. Yeah, I think so too. Around nineties or low ninety percent, ninety-three, ninety-four. It could. I think part of it too is that buildup. You know, for many of you, may your child may have taken AP exam or you know, they you build up the importance of SAT exam. You you typically can see participate, people don't miss big events, a big sporting event. And when you build it up like this is big, make sure you show up. And I think if you also know now this year that we will catch, if if you don't want to do it, the next day, the next day, next day, when you come back, that now you're gonna do it. Just just come and let's do it, if that's the mindset. But you're right that, you know, we have to have that makeup session and make sure we try to get students who come in late or else we're set up for already being behind. Good point.
Is the emphasis of the ninety-five percent put in and and unfair uh strength on student school? Um, it may or may not be uh great test figures or unnecessary anxiety on student's. Students may not necessarily need to move forward.
May not need to test potentially. Um, but for those, it's just like the map test or any test, we do try to say the teachers will use this information to to better drive the instruction, do planning, whether for individual students or for the classes whole, so we know where our gaps are and and how to better lesson plan. But you're right, so tha- that test anxiety piece is real, um especially for someone who may not believe it's as important, there's uh not a student incentive piece for them to do well on it, like any other state assessment or map exam that we give three times a year. It is.
We, the data already says. Um, it's called the invite, and so to to place an emphasis on that, on something that we already know has a bias. And in addition to the ninety-five percent uh attendance rate.
Mm-hmm. And that's, and that, this was a little bit uh more detailed in the board packet, but that's under the S L law. That's, the rules are written under there, and we have to the penalty given to our district in our our state is written under the the federal law. And so we do our best to create a plan to abide by the law, so we're not penalized for that. You make excellent points there.
Reverend Perry, to the, to that point, um many of the vocational school districts um really um suffer in terms of SAT participation rates. Uh, for many of those students who are going right into a career field, they don't see the need for the SAT. But as uh Mr. Rivera points out, the feedback to teachers across all spectrums of all students, how do we better address curricular gaps and holes? That that data is important for us, and while ninety-four percent may be the average attendance rate on any given day, typically on SAT days, that drops down to seventy-eight, eighty percent attendance. So ways to encourage and support students to uh take that test, even those who may not see it as important. Uh, that data that we gather in terms of instructional curriculum practices uh is vitally important.
I I think that there are other ways that we can um identify the student gaps other than a standardized test. Just because data says that that's not an accurate way to do so.
Agree, uh but again, it's a, it's a national uh benchmark regulation set forth in the S R regs. Uh, state of Delaware doesn't have any leeway around that participation rate. But I am encouraged by the new uh committee that Secretary Holidick has formed around assessment and accountability. Um, our own data assessment individual in the district, Hope Moffett, has been asked to represent uh Newcastle County on that committee. So we will have the inside scoop and voice at the table as we do petition to see what could be allowable uh under maybe different federal regulations moving forward. We're hopeful.
But to be clear, not every state does the SAT for every student. And that is one of the things that makes Delaware look bad compared to other states. And this has been a problem that's been ongoing since we started doing this. We require a hundred percent of our students to take it. Other states may only be ten, fifteen, twenty percent. And they're up here, we're down here, and people say, well, I don't want to move to Delaware because your schools are horrible. So we need to kind of face that reality as a state, and I hope Su- uh Secretary of Education Holidick is taking, taking on that responsibility because that's something that needs to be addressed.
Certainly agree. Superintendent's had a conference back in October. It was one of the the topics discussed. Um, we do, our SAT scores when they're published do look substandard uh to our neighboring states who only publish the scores, the averages of those students interested in taking the SAT. who only publish the scores, the averages of those students interested in taking the SATs versus all students. We, again, that assessment and accountability committee that's being formed, we're very hopeful that that can drive some of the change that needs to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera.
Appreciate it.
Welcome.
So we do have some additional special recognitions and thank you to all of our friends and family who have hung in here with us so far. Uh next time, maybe we'll try to move uh move those ahead of special presentations.
Think of all the great information they would have missed if they were.
Good evening, President Scrobot, Vice President Heller, awesome members of the board, all of our wonderful um audience that is present this evening, as well as those uh joining via Zoom. My name is Delithia McIntyre and I am the Director of Human Resources. Up on stage with me is Hakima Wicker and he is an administrator in HR as well. Tonight, I know you must be feeling like I do, proud to be in BSD. We've heard about some awesome, awesome student work at the high schools and swimmers setting records. We heard about geniuses in third grade. I'm like, well, okay, we are doing a whole lot of things, right? As well as equity initiatives, family engagement, and the very, very important work of House Bill one ninety-eight. Tonight, we have the privilege of bringing up some awesome people who are boots on the ground, getting some of this work done. Right now, I'd like to please invite in the absence of Principal uh Tamara Grimes Stewart. I'd like to invite up Vice Principal, um Assistant Principal, Ms. Dana Jackson. And it looks like Mr. Edward Burks is gonna join her, Dr. Sharad. Are you gonna come up as well, the two deans at Claymont? And the other AP is out right now, but they are going to do presentations of their staff. You can come on up. And you can hang right here, gentlemen, you may wanna join Mr. Wicker and you can hand out some awards for us and save some time. So we are going to um start with Claymont. And Ms. Jackson will share with you some particulars about what each of these awesome recipients have done. But I would like to invite the recipients up with a quote that Ms. Faye Schaumberger, who is their Behavior Health Professional of the Year for their building, said in her packet. Never underestimate the value and the important difference you make in every life you touch. For the impact you make today has a powerful rippling effect on every tomorrow. So with that, I would like to please welcome to the stage to join us Ms. Rory Gulati, Teacher of the Year at Claymont Elementary School. I would also like to call up Ms. Nicole Smith, the Educator Support Professional of the Year, and Ms. Faye Schaumberger, the Behavior Health Professional. Would you all please help me welcome?
Good evening. Greetings to our Brandywine Board President Scrobot, Vice President Heller, our Brandywine School Board Superintendent Holder, our Brandywine Executive Team colleagues, BSD staff and families. My name is Dana Jackson and I'm the proud Assistant Principal of Claymont Elementary. Unfortunately, Tamara Stewart, our school principal, is unable to be here. But she wanted me to share the following information about our amazing and outstanding colleagues on her behalf, along with our administration team. Mr. Edward Burks, Dr. Sharad, our Deans of Students. Tonight, I have been given the privilege to introduce you, well, some of you, to our amazing colleagues. These women tonight truly exemplify BSD proud. Each one leads with their heart and truly cares about the students we encounter daily. Claymont Elementary is able to accomplish so much because of colleagues like these three. As I read about each person, you will hear some common themes. Dedication, love and longevity. To our Educator Support Professional of the Year, Nicole Smith, we congratulate you. Can I get another round of applause? She's being recognized as our Claymont Elementary's Educator Support Staff of the Year. She is currently a par educator in our B S A program. Nicole has been at Claymont for over ten years, working specifically with our autism program. She has dedicated her life to ensuring that all students she encounters grow. Nicole uses her talents and skills to connect with students and staff. She goes beyond to ensure students are successful. Nicole has been the lead teacher and has mentored new staff. She loves the program. She uh is also uh our program guide for our behavior analyst group. Sorry, I messed that up. But she is a leader in our building. She cares so deeply for students and wants to ensure we are providing them with the best support we can. Where would we be without Nicole T. Smith? Also, Nicole is dedicated to our drama club where her creativity is able to shine. Here are some words that her colleagues have said to describe her. Guardian angel. That's huge. Positive attitude, amazing, dedicated, selfless and kind, insightful, a team player, and Nicole, a heart of gold. We could not agree more. In the words of one of her colleagues, she is simply the best. Thank you, Nicole. To our Behavioral Health Professional of the Year, Faye Schaumberger, congratulations. She's being recognized as Claymont Elementary's Behavioral Prof- Professional of the Year. Faye is a district-wide social worker who supports Claymont Elementary, among other schools. Faye Schaumberger has been dedicated to families for years, staff and students alike in the Brandywine School District. And I mean twenty years, over twenty years. Faye has been the team leader for support services at Claymont Elementary and is also the co-team leader for social workers across the district. She goes above and beyond for families and our district. From home visits to supporting families who are in need of food, shelter and clothing. Ms. Schaumberger's love of helping others is evident in all that she does. During the pandemic, Ms. Schaumberger dropped off desks, computers, special treats to students and families in need. Faye works hard to build relationships with students and families, even after families uh have moved on from elementary. They continue to reach out and seek her support. She has a heart of gold as well and truly cares about people. A few comments from her students. Dear Ms. Schaumberger, thank you for all that you did for my family and for supporting me through my journey without my dad. I know you really enjoyed him a lot and so did I. I really love having you in Claymont Elementary School and I really hope you enjoy this letter and I miss seeing you. Ms. Schaumberger, for being there, thank you for being there for me and helping me when I was down. I thank you so, so much. You helped me through some tough times. Thank you so, so much. A few words from her colleagues, you are nurturing and inspiring. You are like family, dedicated and supportive. Claymont BSD is fortunate to have you. You also have a great heart, a great, great heart, Ms. Schaumberger. Thank you. All right. To our Teacher of the Year, Rory Gulati, thank you. You are recognized as Claymont Elementary's Teacher of the Year. Rory is currently one of our fifth grade gifted and talented teachers. She has been at Claymont for over fifteen years. You are dedicated to your students and families, Ms. Gulati. She creates lessons that are engaging, rigorous, interactive. Ms. Gulati is dedicated to ensuring all students grow. She also gives them a voice. From coaching girls on the run to math clubs and after-school activities, Rory is about empowering all of her students. I would be remiss to mention she is our fashionista as well. Welcome to the Claymont runway when Ms. Gulati shows up. Rory is innovative, data-driven and insightful. Rory does not hesitate to support her colleagues, students and family. Some words from her students. The best teacher ever, fun and kind, your style made me so happy along with your family stories. Your kind words reassured me when I was down. Your organization, good thinking and storytelling makes you a teacher that anyone can like. You're nice, you're kind and you're energetic. I am so overjoyed to be a student in your classroom. One of her colleagues said it best, you are inspiring and the students are lucky to know you and so are we. So thank you um from everyone to you.
Thank you, Claymont. Next, I would like to invite to join me Principal of Lancashire Middle uh Elementary School, I'm sorry, Ms. Veronica Wilkie. And Mr. Paul Iaboni, I see you got this, Iaboni. Our Assistant Principal, they will be coming up. And while they are coming, I would just like to read um a brief something from one of their recipients tonight. Teacher of the Year, Ashley Sforza. She said, when asked, what do you believe is one of the most major public education issues of today? I believe equity is one of the most major public education issues today. The importance of preparing all students for opportunities by providing equitable practices is an ongoing issue in society. I believe it is vital for educators to address this issue, not only in the classroom, but also in the district and the community. In order to close the achievement gap for all students, this is extremely important matter to me. And I am addressing these issues at a foundational level at the elementary school. So please come on up and join us. And while they are coming, I would like to please invite Ms. Ashley Sforza, their Teacher of the Year. Um Latonia Davis, their Educator Support Professional of the Year, and Ms. Laura Becker, their Behavior Health Professional of the Year.
Good evening, everyone. We are so very proud to be here today. And you know, one of the things we always say in Brandywine is proud to be BSD. Well, we brought our own BSD with us today. So we are not only proud to be BSD, we are so, so very proud to work with BSD. Ms. Ms. Laura Becker, our B, Ms. Swartz, our S, and Ms. Davis, our D. Yes. These are three phenomenal women. As I was listening to the Claymont presentation, I'm saying, she's talking about my people. I mean, they are awesome, they are dedicated, they are responsible, they are there for children at every step of the way. And just to tell you a little bit more about it, we're gonna start with Mr. Iaboni, the Assistant Principal here at Lancashire, sharing a little bit about our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Swartz.
Good evening, everyone, members of the board, Superintendent Holder and all of Lancashire at home. Hi, guys. One of the privileges of being a building administrator is having the opportunity to publicly recognize outstanding educators. And it's truly a joy to celebrate these three remarkable women. I'm honored to introduce the twenty twenty-three Teacher of the Year for Lancashire Elementary School, Mrs. Ashley Sforza. So her students describe her as exciting, helpful, kind, happy, respectful and pretty. I won't, I won't tell you who said that. Uh her colleagues say that Ms. Forza is authentic, that she authentically enjoys children. She's conscientious and enthusiastic. She helps to pull the team together with new ideas and she is not afraid of technology. I'd like to add that uh she also has a wonderful sense of humor and she has to, she's a New York Giants fan. And a Mets fan, uh not everybody shares that sense of humor though. She's truly a uh team player embracing uh new challenges. She has taken on the role of second grade English language partner for our Spanish immersion program. She sponsors both the robotics program, which is a huge undertaking, and Girls on the Run. I think most, if not all of our faculty would agree that Ms. Forza, as one colleague described, is even keeled. She doesn't raise her voice and yet her students are always engaged and on task. She's been like that since her first year at Lancashire. However, sometime during the first year in our school, we had a uh volleyball game between faculty and students using a beach, a beach ball. Pretty tame stuff, a lot of giggling, tapping the ball back and forth until the ball went near Ms. Forza. As if in slow motion, she transformed into Kerry Walsh Jennings. The speed and the power of the hit, it was a, it was a blur. Now, there were no casualties, but I thought that was intense. And then later we found out that she still was actively playing rugby. But it's with that same intensity, passion and focus that Ms. Forza approaches teaching. She continues to grow as a professional and as a leader in our building. Her smile and positive nature is absolutely infectious, even through the Zoom years. Ms. Forza is genuine in her care for students, frequently collaborating with colleagues to learn all that she can. She works long after school hours have ended, she's doing her homework. I feel comfortable saying that this is one of many awards that Ms. Forza will be presented with over the course of her career. We are most fortunate that she's a member of our faculty. She is undeniably loved and admired by the entire Lancashire community. A Lancashire Teacher of the Year, Ms. Ashley Sforza.
He loves making me feel short. Okay. So I'm going to now present Ms. Becker, our Health Professional of the Year. Ms. Becker has been with Lancashire for over thirty years. Wow. That goes to say that, yes, that deserves a round of applause. That goes to say that Lancashire finds her invaluable. Ms. Becker takes care of, she was test coordinator, she was in charge of PBS before it was MTSS. She did a small groups with children, family groups, reached out on five oh fours, a whole list of things that you would say, I wanna go home tonight if you don't. It's okay, please not list everything she does. But what, no matter what Ms. Becker does, the first thought in her mind is how does it impact the students? How is what I'm doing right now going to be beneficial? And if it's not going to be beneficial, if it is not going to help them, she is going to look for another way. Let's think this through, let's see what else we can do because she knows they're paramount in all that we do. And that includes working with their families to make sure that the families have what they need in order to support their children as well. Now, don't just think it's the children, she has been there for staff throughout her career. We all know that if we're having challenging times, that Ms. Becker's gonna help us through. We know that if there's a student who we need some support for, who are we going to call? Ms. Becker. There are so many times during the school day that you just hear. There are so many times during the school day that you just hear that name. Oh, what would be Ms. Becker think? Where's Ms. Becker? Um, she, see, even now. She has been a staple at Lancashire. She is continuing to help us grow. She is building capacity within our schools because we know that all that she did can't truly be done effectively by any other person. So we have to start looking in other directions as well, and she is helping us with that. Recognizing that we all need to grow professionally. So we thank Ms. Becker for all that she does. We know that she is phenomenal in what she does. We know that she will continue to work with our children, with our families, with our staff, with the community at large, organizing Ronald McDonald House, making sure that people everywhere has what, have what they need. So we thank you, Ms. Becker, for all that you do for Lancashire and the community. Oh, and I was just informed her car is full of food right now for the food drive. Oh, she delivered it already. So um we just thank you so much for all that. Ah, now I have the honor of presenting to Ms. Latonya Davis. Yes. I'm sorry. Ms. Don, Ms. Davis and I began working together probably about twenty, two thousand in two thousand. When we were both at Claymont. During, at that time, we knew she was someone special. We just didn't know how special. She was working with our reading specialists and just absorbing everything that that woman had to give her. We said we parted ways for a while. She went off to Mount Pleasant High uh Elementary School in the ESP program. And boy, did they cry when I got her back at Lancashire. Mr. Albeck actually said she was our go-to person. I understand why she's going, um but she was ours. And I'm telling you, we are so thrilled to have her. No matter what is needed, she's there. Teachers are begging me for this para-professional. Ms. Wilkie, can I please have Ms. uh Ms. uh Ms. Davis? Can I please have Ms. Davis? I'm going to be absent tomorrow. Can I get Ms. Davis? Can I get Ms. Davis? Because Ms. Davis far surpasses the expectations of para-professional. Ms. Davis, as everyone at Lancashire knows, needs to have her own classroom. So we're working on that because she can take any lesson and reach those expectations with those children. She placed them high. She came into the school as our um Spanish immersion para-professional. That's how I got her. And immediately, prior to even coming into the building, she said, I'm going to learn Spanish. So I can work better with these children. She started at the end of the school year, probably the first week of June. And within that short amount of time, she developed such a relationship with those children that they were also begging for her the next year. Don't we get Ms. Davis again? So Ms. Davis has the ability to reach children from the youngest to the oldest. For those most challenged to those without challenges. She cares. They know it and they love her. She is fair, firm, and she expects you to give her your best at all times. And for that reason, she has been named our educational support person of the year. Lancashire is truly blessed, really fortunate to have our own BSD.
Fantastic testimonials for our Claymont and Lancashire educators and educator support professionals. Thank you again to the families that have stuck around and come out to show your support. We thank them for what they do in our schools and we thank you for what you do to support them and sharing them with us. So thank you. That'll lead us into superintendent's report.
President Scrobott, Vice President Heller, members of the board and everyone in our audience here tonight. I am once again honored to share the latest updates of all the amazing things happening throughout our district. It's been a busy month as our students and teachers prepare for the upcoming much deserved winter break. I want to begin by showcasing some of the holiday spirit on display in our district. Mount Pleasant High School's band and choir recently had the opportunity to perform at the twenty-second Holiday Open House at Rockwood Park. The Free Family Event included a spectacular holiday display of lights in the park, museum tours, free photos with Santa, and of course, beautiful performances from our band and choir. Meanwhile, at Concord High School, the Breakfast with Santa event returned this past weekend. On Saturday morning, community members were able to enjoy a hot breakfast, all while taking photos with Santa Claus. At the same time, the Concord High School Holiday Shopping Event also returned. More than thirty vendors were on site, which also served as a fundraiser for childhood cancer. The event was organized by the classes of twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. I'm also thrilled to share that the Magical Choir from Concord High School made it to the top ten in WJBR's Christmas Choir Competition. Community members can vote for the Concord High School Choir using the link you see on your screen. We'll make sure to share this link prominently in our post-meeting recap. And you know, it's already prominently featured on our social media channels. You can vote once per hour up till December sixteenth. The winner will take home five thousand dollars for their music program. We're wishing the best of luck to the Concord Magical Choir. And we can't forget that since our last meeting, we also had the Thanksgiving holiday. This year, a decades-long tradition continued throughout the district. Want to thank our school nutrition department as well as district office team members who helped serve our BSD students their annual turkey lunch. This tradition has taken place every year for the past thirty years. In all, more than six thousand turkey lunches were served just before Thanksgiving break. Also, just before Thanksgiving, Claymont Elementary School hosted a Stuff the Bus Food Donation Event. The school sent off approximately fourteen hundred pounds of food to the Food Bank of Delaware. Claymont Student Body and Staff donated the food items and toiletries. The school's student council helped load the items and even the bus drivers participated. This was one of just many donation drives held throughout our district. I want to thank all of our students and staff members for their thoughtfulness and generosity throughout this holiday season. Claymont Elementary also received an exciting recognition this month. The school and Principal Tammy Grimes Stewart were recognized by the Secretary of Education, Dr. Mark Hollidick, alongside eleven other schools from across the state for their students' growth and progress toward English language proficiency. In the announcement, Secretary Hollidick congratulated both our students and the families and educators who supported and helped them achieve significant growth again in the area of English Language Arts proficiency. A reminder for our families, the school choice window for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year is now open. The application window closes on January eleventh, twenty twenty-three. You can learn more about the school choice process on our website right on the homepage. We've also included the video replay from our recent Choice Information Night on the website as well as a compilation video showcasing all of our amazing BSD schools. I'd also like to share that our Gifted Education Services referral window is now open for students currently in grades one through seven. We have all the information about the referral process as well as how it's conducted on our website. You can find that information right on the homepage and we'll be sure to include a link in our post-meeting communication. Also want to spotlight Sabrina Fitzhugh and the Gifted Education Services teachers at Piastapont Middle School for recently hosting an information session for our incoming middle school families. This event gave our current and prospective families information about gifted education services at the middle school level. While parents were thrilled to hear from the teachers themselves, even better was the testimonials that were delivered from the students currently in the program. Pitched on your screen now is teacher Jamie Fitzhugh with some of his students. Our marketing communications team is working on a long-term project that will eventually showcase all of the high school pathways at our three district high schools. As you know, we have a lot of pathways and course offers offerings right here in BSD. Whatever your future plans are, we have a pathway to support those career goals. The project is kicking off with our CTE, Career and Technical Education Pathways. Tonight, I'm happy to share a preview of the work to come. Let's take a look. Fits right in with that equity statement that was made just a while ago. As you can tell, it's been another busy month in our district. I always want to make sure to say this every month, that these highlights are a mere glimpse into all that is happening throughout our district. Our schools are doing such an amazing and incredible job this year. At Piastapont Middle School, students displaying great behavior through MTSS tier-one structures were treated to an ice cream social. We're also fortunate enough to capture BSD School Nutrition Department honoring their employee of the month. The award was presented to Russell Perry, who serves as cook at Springer Middle School. Nominations for the Employee of the Month Award came from Russell's peers in the school nutrition department. Mr. Perry was nominated by five Springer colleagues. Our high schools have all completed their fall plays, including Concord High School's recent performance of Elf Junior, the Musical. You may recognize the student playing Buddy the Elf in the photo. That's Jared Roman, who was just recognized alongside some of his peers for earning the rank of Eagle Scout. For her Eagle project, Elena planned and executed the building of two sets of picnic tables that convert to benches for accessibility and flexible utility. She and her teammates installed them in a courtyard at Mount Pleasant High School. Want to congratulate Senior Elena Walter for becoming the first female Eagle Scout in Troop Fifty Five O Eight, which she helped found. And at Harlan Elementary School, the school recently hosted a family literacy night. Students and families enjoyed a night full of games, giveaways, raffles, a scavenger hunt and an in-person bedtime story by none other than their favoritest principal, Tracy Roberts. Meanwhile, students at Carcroft and Hamby Elementary Schools are counting, uh continuing their work with their school gardens in collaboration with Healthy Foods for Healthy Kids. Both groups of students participated in their first fall harvest. Healthy Foods for Healthy Kids is now gearing up to have yet another garden at our district at, in our district at Lancashire Elementary. And over the last several weeks, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Lisa Lawson and I have been visiting BSD elementary and middle schools to have lunch with small groups of students. These lunches have provided the opportunity to hear from our students about their school experiences so far this year and allows them to provide feedback. Needless to say, the feedback and conversations have been invaluable and interesting. Want to thank our building administrators who helped schedule these lunches and of course, thank the students who were willing to come and participate and share openly with two strangers, but yet uh very insightful in their responses. As we've shared in many previous updates, ensuring that our students have opportunities to use their voice and share their experiences is incredibly important to us. Some of our middle school students are taking part in a collaborative music project alongside musical group known as the Eastern Standard Trio. The group is working on a piece of music that was written to be open to student and audience participation. All of the music students at Piastapont Middle School were invited to take part using either their instruments or their voices. We have a, a video showcasing this collaboration in action. Let's take a look.
Today at Piastapont Middle School, we had a very unique musical experience with the Eastern Standard Trio. They came to visit our kids to perform for them and also collaborate on a world premiere for um a piece titled A Grand Day Out, written by Robert Lytton.
What we're doing here is the trio here is going to be performing a piece. And there's four different sections where we're going to invite you all to join us and make sounds with us. The idea was we sculpted a piece that depicts a group of friends going out into nature and encountering very uh collection of sounds such as birds, winds, water, and then inviting the students to create those sounds on the spot, just off the top of their head. The great thing about music is the, the goal is so in the moment. The great thing about music is the, the goal is so in the moment. The goal was, you know, the ten minutes we were interacting with the students and creating music that was just for a moment and then it was gone, but the memories remain.
It is a cool thing to be a part of their middle school experience because, I mean, it is that those transition years and if you can keep the music alive and then now up through high school, like, it typically stays with them for a lifetime. So it's trying to create experiences that they will remember way down the road and it's cool to have a part of that.
For the rest of their lives, they would remember their adventure in Brandywine State Park and smile when thinking about just how grand a day it had been. It's set up in a way that we have ideas and thoughts about how it should go, but there's lots of room for adjustments and improvisation and to allow the students to surprise us with things we would have never thought about. And there was, there was plenty of that and it was magic. It was great.
Brandywine School District recently hosted a Unified Bachi Tournament, which included all secondary schools and the site program. The events included opening ceremonies and bachi games. Many students volunteered to help and even served as judges. It was wonderful to see all of our BSD students come together to participate in such a wonderful event. Like to thank Jess Dugan, the Brandywine School District's adapted physical education teacher for her efforts in organizing the event. We put together a video showcasing this event, but I warn you, be ready for just how powerful and moving this video is.
There are one hundred and forty athletes and unified partners, joined by their teachers and staff from their independent schools, and the Delaware Interscholastic Athletic Association Unified Sports Committee.
Today we are at Brandywine High School and we are hosting the BSD Secondary Bachi Tournament. BSD, we partner with Special Olympics Delaware and we bring individuals with disabilities and without students to partner and compete and practice together to do events such as what we're doing today, bachi.
Nice job. Yay.
At BSD, our focus is always to provide all of our students with equal opportunities in physical activity. So we have Springer here, we have PSG Pont, we have Mount Pleasant High School, Concord High School, Brandywine High School, as well as the site program. Ready, low, one, two, three, two. Yay. Partnering with Special Olympics Delaware, we're able to bring our students together and we're able to have unified opportunities to participate in sport. It's great because it helps build relationships, it helps build, you know, acceptance, just a good, strong, inclusive community in, in our district.
That concludes my presentation for this evening. Want to take this time to wish all of our families a safe, healthy holiday season. Of course, share my monthly send-off. It's very easy tonight to see why we are all proud to be BSD.
Any comments or questions from the board on superintendent's report? I would just add, maybe we can start to work some of these short clip videos into the, uh, our website, get some prominent placement and cycle them through till the, till the next, uh, next meeting if we can. Uh, that takes us to public comment. We only have one speaker this evening, Jeanette Wilt. Going to save my spiel because I think you've been here before, so your time will start when you begin to speak. And you'll have two minutes.
Hi, I promise to be brief. So, good evening. My name is Jeanette Wilt. I teach math and computer science here at Brandywine. Um, and while last time I spoke, I was treasurer of DSA, I was recently appointed vice president at the November board meeting. Um, I have some apologies and thanks tonight. I was on a plane returning from Chicago during the last board meeting, so I thanked Dr. Lawson for speaking to the board last time about the early childhood education resolution. I also want to apologize for the errors contained in that resolution and a special apology to Ms. Pigeon for her name being left off the list. I know that Dr. Lawson corrected the errors and gave the resolution the correct number to match Brandywine's numbering system. So I am once again asking for the board to approve this resolution so that the funding system for our youngest and most vulnerable children is made more equitable and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilt. Moving on to board, uh, lead member liaison reports. DSBA Executive Board, Mr. Ackerman?
Uh, we have not met since our last meeting. We meet again in January.
Great, thank you very much. And I know some of these I should have removed, but may still be on the live version. Correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Ms. Gordon, no DSBA Legislative Committee today?
You are correct. The DSBA Legislative did not meet again this month and we will not be meeting until the first of February.
Thank you very much. District Finance Committee, um, through a host of conflicts, we did not have any board representation at the District Finance Committee, Committee this month on December seventh. Ms. Florae will present the financial, monthly financial report shortly and our next meeting is scheduled for January third, early due to the early board meeting as well. Educated Recruitment, no update, Ms. Stock, is that correct?
No, not, not yet. Uh, the, um, new format is in the process of forming right now.
Great, thank you. Uh, Health and Wellness Advisory, Mr. Heller.
Uh, no meeting since the last meeting?
Meeting, great. Maintenance Advisory Committee?
So, a meeting was held November fifteenth at Claymont Elementary. Uh, we talked about the recent state audit of construction financial documents, which for many, many years in a row found, um, no issues with the audit. And then we talked about the Thanksgiving maintenance activities, um, including the paving of the bus yard and I think we, that might have been covered in the board recap from last month. Um, there was some information on all those activities. Or on Facebook, I remember seeing it somewhere. We talked about maintenance and safety and security funding that was included in the bond bill and how that process goes for us to receive that funding and then we touched a little bit on the major projects for the next two summers and they're going to go out to bid over the next couple of months. And the next meeting's January tenth at PS.
Thank you very much, Mr. Heller. Parent and Citizen Advisory Committee, Reverend Perry?
Uh, the Parent and Citizens Advisory Committee has not met since our last meeting. As a follow-up to the meeting that was held in November, excuse me, in October with the principals. Uh, they, the principals were given until December the fifteenth to submit their respective names for the committee. Once the names have been received from the building leaders, our PIO, Danielle Pro Hudson will schedule a meeting for early January.
Fantastic, thank you. Uh, Wilmington Learning Collaborative update?
Um, the Wilmington Learning Collaborative met on Friday, December the second via virtually. Uh, attendees included, uh, the governor's staff or members of the governor's staff, superintendents from each of three school districts, as well as board members, uh, city representatives from the respective board, excuse me, school districts, in addition to a support staff. Um, our agenda was extremely aggressive, uh, so as you can imagine, with any other aggressive agenda, we did not, um, have an opportunity to discuss all of the items on our agenda. The items that we were able to discuss or have some type of discussion around were establishing meeting norms, our decision make, to include our decision-making process, a council member termination dates. The thought was, um, it's being recommended that members' term limits should be staggered so that, uh, parent reps and other appointees' terms don't expire at the same time. Uh, process, excuse me, the executive director job description, the engagement and role of Delaware State University, Christina School District's current, uh, plan that the MOU that they currently are executing. And, uh, the group decided that our priority, our top priority at this time is to complete the nominations of prospective board members. Uh, each, the, each of the three district liaisons did work together to create a synonymous application process, which we completed. I am pleased to announce tonight that, um, the parent, excuse me, the parent representative, who will represent our district, her name is Mrs. Starr Wilson. Last week, Superintendent, uh, Link Kohler, the Director of Community Engagement and Partnership, Lavinia Jones Davis, Principal Tracy Roberts, and I had an opportunity to interview Ms. Wilson and, um, were pleasantly surprised. Her credentials are more than amazing. Um, and she, and we believe that she will serve in this position well. Some of her background, uh, attributes include she is a parent of two Harlan students. She brings to the, this in particular endeavor, lots of community, uh, background. She is a social worker for more than ten years. She's an advocate for student and students and their families. Ms. Wilson also understands the demands already placed on this school and the nuances that come along with being a school within the city limits. Um, her application is rooted and connected with the Harlan family and the metropolitan Wilmington communities. Most importantly, she understands the heavy load that this endeavor will, uh, undergo, but has articulated that she's already ready and willing to support this work and this, the current work of Mrs. Roberts. Uh, the bonuses, again, is that, uh, one is that she is a, a parent of two Harlan students, one of which is a kindergarten now, which speaks to her long-term investment at Harlan, but also she is a former Harlan student herself, that we found that out during the interview. And she is also a former student of our superintendent that also came out during the interview. So we unanimously agreed that because of these reasons, her, uh, commitment to the community, the fact that she is not only, um, invested, an invested parent, but also is a former Harlan student. We believe that she is not just the ideal, but the perfect candidate to serve as the representative on the Wilmington Learning Collaborative.
Right, fantastic.
And I'm sorry, our next meeting will be held December the twentieth, uh, virtually at eleven AM.
Thank you very much, Reverend Perry. Uh, ninety-one seven WMPH, no updates, no meetings since last reported, uh, other than, recommendation to the public to tune into ninety-one seven for your more music mornings and as well as a variety of student programming and a variety of music throughout the day. Any additional board member reports or comments?
Um, Mr. Perry, I just wanted to, um, acknowledge that, um, you and I and superintendent, we were able to attend the, um, recognition ceremony, uh, for our educators, support, um, personnel and, uh, thrilled, just thrilled, uh, to see Meg Brown from Concord, uh, recognize and what she wrote. Um, it was just so touching because it was so student-centered and, um, you know, the people who are recognized, I know teachers get a lot of attention. But the people who really run the buildings are our admin assistants, our custodians, and the, the people who are there early, leave late and, um, so grateful, uh, for all of our educator support personnel and, and obviously just a touching, uh, testimonies, uh, tonight from, uh, the people recognized, um, you know, just so happy. So congratulations again to Ms. Brown.
Yeah, thank you for including Ms. Brown. Thank you, Ms. Stock.
Um, Mr. President, can I also just acknowledge, uh, the work of our Director of Community Support, Ms. Lavinia Jones Davis and Principal Roberts, who was, who both are here tonight.
Great, thank you.
I just want to add that the, um, Parent Council for Students with Disabilities, next meeting is on Jan- January fifth at six fifteen at PS.
Great, thank you, Ms. Pigeon. That concludes board member reports. Uh, this time I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Personnel matters. Do I have a motion to accept the monthly personnel report as discussed in executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to accept employee, uh, accept the superintendent's recommendation on employee matter twenty-three dash one zero one as discussed in executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Student matters. Do I have a motion to accept the student choice reports for invitations and denials as discussed in executive session?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Takes us into old business, the proposed BSD and BEA Joint Resolution on Pre-K Funding. Dr. Lawson?
Yes, thank you, President Scrobuck, Vice President Heller, members of the board and Superintendent Holer. The revised resolution is in front of you, just a couple of clarifications from last month. So House Bill eighty-six was signed into law. That was for the K to twelve basic funding to be lowered to eight point four. So this resolution ac- actually aligns to the eight point four for kindergarten. It would lower the basic unit for pre-K from twelve point eight down to eight point four so that, that they would match. This bill was presented last year before both House and Senate and it passed. However, um, I'm told it got lost in appropriations, so it did not move forward. Representative Kim Williams is reintroducing it for this legislative session. So your resolution would support, uh, her reintroduction of this legislation. Um, and, uh, our own representative Deborah Heffernan called me and indicated that she would be co-sponsoring and supporting this. I haven't talked to Representative Matthews, but she indicated that she believed he would be in support as well. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Move to accept the superintendent's recommendation regarding the joint resolution?
Have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those, any discussion?
I just want to say, great job tailoring that to Brandywine School District.
Of course.
You read through it and now it, it reads very well.
Thank you, sir.
Any further comments or discussion? We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Lawson. Moves us on to old business, Board Policy zero-two dot zero-one. Few amendments to Board Operations Authority and Responsibilities. This is our second read. Had a few, uh, text adjustments. Ms. Stock, any items you want to add?
Uh, no, I, I can just, um, update the community since, uh, this was introduced, uh, this past summer. Since that time, um, several of us have met, uh, to look at this policy, to, um, edit, to, um, come up with something, um, that seemed to be, um, something, something that would work for the Brandywine School District. And, um, so here we are tonight to take a look at this, um, as a second read.
Move to accept policy zero-two point zero-one with the updates?
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. President, I, I would just highly recommend, I, I don't have a problem with the updates to the policy as I just made the motion, but I would highly recommend that you contact the Delaware School Board Association and set up time with Dr. Marinucci for our board to have a workshop to talk about superintendent evaluation. We can also invite- We could also invite, uh, the President of the Cape Henlopen School Board, who has actually done a doctoral thesis on Superintendent evaluations, and she's also consulted with Christina and at least one other Board that I'm aware of.
That's a great idea. Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Yeah, that's a great idea, and I also, uh, just want to clarify and, um, just ask the Board, um, and the, that, to take that, so that we can take some time as a Board, um, I would, I would ask for the rest of the school year to do exactly what Mr. Ackerman is proposing, um, and to take a look at, we, we've taken a look at some different models that are out there, um, as well as I think some information from, uh, Mr. Marinucci too as well. But I, you know, I think that this is an opportunity for us to come up with something, um, that is going to be a tool, that is going to be, um, an effective, a fair evaluation, and will help to hold us as a Board and future Boards accountable to the community.
Very well. We have motion and a second. Any more comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. New business. Ms. Florae? Florae, um, Monthly Financial Report for November 30th.
Good evening, members of the Board, um, colleagues in the very thin crowd as the last presenter of the night. That's one of the bonuses, right?
So, you're a true fan.
Um, so, we had our, uh, monthly meeting, and I'll give a little report on that, since I know Board Members weren't able to go. But there was one additional item that we talked about, and that was the September 30th unit count. Um, and this year, like Dr. Lawson was talking about with the Spec Ed Basic coming into play possibly in the future, those devisers are in place currently, and this year, without an increase in the number of students, we did see an increase in the number of units. Um, and that is students falling now in, um, greater numbers in intense and complex categories, and that increase was 66. And so, we talked about, pardon? Oh, so, we talked about, um, how that plays into the budget and how that plays into different funding sources. Um, in terms of the monthly report, um, it's in very good shape. Local revenues are at 93.2%. State revenues are at 85.4%, so a total of 88.5%. And five months out of the fiscal year, or 46.1%. So, obviously, we're way ahead because we get taxes, uh, the majority in October. We talked about, there was one line item in expenses that was over at 105%. That was safety and security funding. We're getting, um, an additional safety and security, um, line item from the state. John Reed just submitted the grant for that, so that will disappear as those funds come in. The Committee talked about prior year encumbrances, S R 2, S R 3, um, as we close out some of the old small encumbrances, um, moving into January. The one item, uh, Mr. Hanby couldn't be here tonight, the one item that he said gave, uh, his heart, um, some, uh, exercise was the cash flow. And I want to make a statement, the cash flow in the monthly report, um, has an ending balance of $8.1 million. That, what I said is a placeholder right now as I finish the final budget. The final budget is going to include all of those new appropriations and funding streams that come with the 66 new units. That includes not just Division 1 salaries, it includes related services, um, part of the cash in. So, all of that is kind of working through the budget as we get to, um, to January and finalize that. So, please know, that's a very minimum. I don't expect it's going to be at 8.1 million, but until I kind of ran those, all those numbers in, um, I left it where it was and didn't mean to alarm anybody with that. Um, it, I expect it will be higher than that. And as Mr. Scrobott said, the next meeting is January 3rd at 5:00 PM, so that the Committee can see the budget before, um, I bring it to the Board.
I have a question. That, I just, I heard you say 66 initially, and then I thought you were speaking about 66 students that were intense and complex increase, but it's not. You mean, there are enough students to warrant 66 teacher or staff units?
Units, correct. And that would be paraprofessionals, um, support staff, everything that's within the, within the building. And remember too, this year, there was new funding for HB 100 that was part of the unit count. Last year, it was a cash allocation, and this year, it's part of the unit count. So, there were, uh, pieces across the Board in the unit count that increased. Both related services, the HB 100, and the Division 1 units.
Does that, um, how does that translate to number of students in tax, intense and complex though? Like, what is that increase or percentage of increase?
Um, I have the numbers here. The complex was 97, um, and now is 156. The intense was 56, and now is 88. So, the greatest growth was, I shouldn't say growth, the greatest change was students who were intense moving to complex. As a, as a rubric, as the IEP team, um, you know, evaluated and, um, went through that process.
So, how does that, the tuition tax look for that growth of students?
And that, that's funny, that's the exact question that the Committee asked. Um, and there's an interplay, right? Because it's not, uh, 66 additional local funds. They are positions and supports that existed, and so it is that interplay, and that's what I'm kind of working through right now, that interplay between tuition, um, and local funds and units. A lot of what we're going to see now is, is some funds for 100% tuition-funded paras that would now have state support, that didn't have state support before. So, some of it's going to move off of tuition, while some of it's going to move towards local, and so that's what's shifting around, and I should be able to, um, articulate with the exact numbers in that final budget.
Thank you.
Yes, I think as you work through, that'll be helpful for the Committee as well as for the Board in the January meeting. Any additional comments or questions? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move to accept the financial report, so we got it?
Have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. General Information Meeting Updates. Next Board Meeting is early, January 9th. Superintendent, any comments why we moved that early? Did we talk about that earlier? State?
Oh, yeah.
Board meeting?
Marley, the King Holland.
Yeah, holidays, January 15th. Okay. January 9th here at the Brandywine High School Auditorium, followed by February 6th, Brandywine High School Auditorium, followed by March 20th, Brandywine High School Auditorium.
February is also very early because of, uh, Valentine's Day and something immediately after.
Presidents' Day.
Presidents' Day, so, yeah, two very early Board Meetings, uh, followed by a late Board Meeting in March.
Very well. With that, I thank everyone for your time and attention and participation this evening. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. That concludes our December Meeting. Everyone have a happy, safe holiday season. We'll see you in the new year.